Executive session first. We'll move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and reconvene in open session. Executive session under General Law Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for litigation. Manet, oh, Manette I should say, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. A roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
And I am a yes, we are going to adjourn to executive session to return to open session. Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, we are back from executive session at which advice of counsel was delivered. Next on the agenda, we go to meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes from February 1st, 2022 regular session, January 14th, 2022 regular session, January 11th, 2022 regular session, January 6th, 2022 regular session, December 10th, 2021 regular session, December 14th, 2021 regular session, December 30th, 2021 regular session, and November 30th, 2021 regular session. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm moved. Let's moving on to meeting mail, we have a letter of interest from Janine Perry, 1454 Main Street here in Acushnet, to be appointed to the Beautification Committee. In your letter of interest, Janine states, "I am a retired middle school teacher, love gardening, have many beds at my house. I also volunteer with the trustees at Haskell's Gardens in New Bedford." Gentlemen, do I have a motion to appoint Janine Perry to the Beautification Committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And right on schedule. Next on the agenda, we have appointments. We have Deena St. Pierre from the library to discuss the budget for this upcoming fiscal year.
Hello.
How are you, Deena?
I'm good, thank you. How about you?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
It's weird to stand in front of you, but like normal. So that's a good sign.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So yes, I'm here to talk about the library's FY23 budget. And I believe you've received a level funded budget as well as a budget with additional requests.
That is correct.
And if that's what I'll be speaking with you about today is the additional request? Or am I also reviewing level funded?
Gentlemen?
The additional request would be nice because obviously it requires more funding.
Of course, right. And level funded is pretty straightforward.
Okay. I did peek at your presentation to FinCom.
Okay, great. And you may have also gotten the budget narrative that they asked for, so I, it's wordy, I know, but
That's okay.
You're talking to the library, so. So in our additional requests, the total for the department is $304,336. The bulk of that request comes under the salary lines, the library technician line, which is line 511300. And what we are looking for, the Board of Trustees and I, is to increase our children's room position, which is a library tech three, children's room assistant is the official title. We're looking to bring that from part-time at 19 hours a week to full-time at 35 hours a week. And I know this is a large ask, I'm well aware of that, I'm asking for a full-time position. But for some background, the library is open 45 hours a week. We have two full-time staff members, myself at 35 hours and another staff member at 32 hours, and the rest of the staff is part-time. And being open 45 hours to the public with a 19-hour-a-week children's room assistant has been a bit of a challenge for us. That position was just created a few years back. When I started, there was no children's position at all because when I started, I was at the Russell Memorial Library, which didn't even have a children's room. So after a couple of years, it was obvious that I couldn't do the job of both children's librarian. That's my background is youth services. So I was doing children's librarian and library director. And the Board of Trustees and I realized that wasn't working anymore. So for FY19, we got the part-time children's room assistant position, which was great. I mean, that was born out of demand, like I said in my budget narrative, because moving to Middle Road, we now have a beautiful children's room. We've become a very popular space for people to bring their children for not only the material that's in the room, but for all of the programs that we offer. And the more programs we offer, the higher the demand is for even more programs. So we were, when that position came about, it only took a few minutes for us to realize, you know, we need a full-time person. But then COVID happened, past two years have happened. And so now it's me coming to you a few years after I would have liked asking for a full-time position. Having that position be at full-time would allow, not a full 35-hour presence in the children's room because that position will be doing outreach to schools and in the community, so they may not physically always be in the building. But it'll be a close to 35-hour presence per week in the children's room. It allows for more library-led programming. Right now, we bring in a lot of outside performers or people to do, to lead children's programs. But having a full-time person would allow us to do more programming. It allows for more outreach, not just to the public schools, which we do have a good relationship already with because I do most of the outreach now to them. But it would allow us also to work with the parochial school in town because a lot of those kids use our library, but we never see them in their school setting or, you know, we don't have any attachment to the school. And any local daycares. Another big piece of it is that I'm contracted to work 35 hours per week, but before COVID and during COVID now, I certainly work closer to 40, if not over 40, every week making up the work of a children's librarian to balance out with the person who works 19 hours. A full-time position would certainly take some of that off of my plate and would free me up to do more things in line with being a library director. Not to say I wouldn't ever do any of it. But the timing also feels right because we are rebuilding in a sense. I mean, we're, we've been reopened to the public since June of 2020 when we were doing takeout. Our physical space has been fully reopened since June of 2021. But there are still people finding us who never came to visit us before COVID. We still have people coming back to us now that things seem to be, you know, returning more to, you know, more so to normal. And we really want to launch into a full-scale programming, you know, attack or schedule, if you will, by spring. And it will be so much more effective to do that come summer, which is our busiest time of the year with people being out of school, if we can do this with a full-time children's librarian, really, which is something this town has never had, you know, so.
So the children's program, you've seen some expansion of it or?
For sure. Well, once we moved to, like I said, at Russell, we didn't even have a children's room. It was a corner of the library at Russell. And most of the children's programming was held at the Council on Aging because we didn't have the space at the old library building. So we moved into the new library building and of course, what's going to happen is you have this beautiful facility and people want to come to it. So, and we wanted them to come. And we, you know, pre-COVID, we're doing storytimes a couple of times a week, you know, in the evenings, during the day, craft programs. We had a Lego club, book clubs for kids. We have, you know, quite a span of activities. And we've slowly started to bring those things back. We plan to bring even more back in the spring, especially once it gets a little bit warmer outside and we can be making full use of the beautiful pavilion that's been built for us on the back lawn. So again, right now, to cover that, it would either be me doing a lot of that work along with the person who works 19 hours or us hiring outside performers and using our state aid or money from the Friends of the Library or from a gift account to hire people to come in and do those things, which we would still do if we had a full-time person, we just wouldn't have to do it as much.
As much. Well, this is an increase of, just it's a, like 14.6?
Yeah, and it's, it's, um,
To bring the person up to full-time?
Correct. And, and that's, you know, of course, just for their wages. That doesn't cover benefits, which I know is a whole other piece to it, and I fully understand that.
Right.
But I sincerely believe that the benefit that we would bring to the community with a full-time children's librarian would far outweigh the cost. I mean, it's also important for me to tell you that this past fiscal year, we've lost three outstanding part-time library technicians to neighboring libraries for full-time positions. One of those employees was in a cushion at resident. It's very hard to train people, work with them. I know that they got great training from our library. And now they've gone and brought that talent and experience to three neighboring communities strictly because they wanted full-time work. So I don't want us to be in that position again. You know, it's, the problem with the part-time work for us is we bring in young people who are pursuing degrees in library science. They need experience. It's an ideal location, I think, for them to come and get that. And we also attract people who have retired from their career and they, you know, want to come work part-time at the library. But those that we're attracting, who are furthering their education to be librarians, can't stay for part-time work, so, you know, then they, they move on. And that's rough because then when you lose that, you know, so much of what we do is based on building relationships in the community, which, I don't mean that to sound hokey, I say that very sincerely. A lot of what we do is build relationships. So when there's a constant turnover of people coming in and going out, that's hard on the community, I think, also, particularly in a children's department because a children's librarian forms relationships with young people in the community.
Okay. The comments, Chairman?
The number that you used, you said 14.6. What's 14.6? Because my number's way higher than that.
Well, I came in at 22, was 107.603 and then departmental request, 122.261.
Right. The other way to look at it is that because if you're comparing it, our level funded to the level funded with the additional, it's 16,557 more. So you're looking at it, comparing it to our current FY22.
Right.
But you could also look at it comparing our, and I'm not sure if that's what you were doing, our level funded to our additional, which is 16,557. Oh, okay.
I did it back to 2019.
Oh, yeah, okay. So in two, that's when we got the part-time position was for FY19, right?
I kind of referenced that in your letter.
Right.
So I went back to the 2019 and I took 29.474
Right.
increase. You know, it's, it's something that I think, if you started the programs and you're increasing the programs and, you know, you got to figure out where that plateau of programming is going to be.
Sure.
Because we just can't keep.
Going forever.
That's what the schools are for and things of the like. But I think that we built a great library over there and you've adopted some really cool programs over there residing right by that library and passing by it every day, a few times a day. I'm actually dumbfounded at how many vehicles are in and out of that parking lot. You guys really do bring in a lot of people. The only other question I have is, with the children's room, is it, is it residents or is it people from outside that we do this?
So there's, for me to get into knowing that specifically, like I don't have those figures right now. Like we have to examine that over a certain time period. It's, we're open to anyone from the community. Certainly, based on our circulation, our circula, our highest circulation is to Acushnet residents. So if we're basing it off of circulation, then yes, we're, 75% of our circulation is Acushnet residents. But we also do have people who borrow our material and then attend programs. So it's not strictly Acushnet residents. And I don't have those figures.
Is that part of the wholesale program?
Well, part of the state, in the state of Massachusetts, any public library is open to any resident of the Commonwealth. So somebody who lives in Boston can come to Acushnet and get a sales library card with their Boston address. And we, as part of our certification, we're required to give them that card. But yes, part of the sales network, yes, than anyone from this southeast region, it's about 75 libraries that make up the network. Anybody who has a sales card can come in and use our library. The only thing that they're restricted on, we have a couple of platforms for downloading digital items and of course, that's seen a tremendous increase over the past two years, as you can imagine. But one of those products is called Hoopla and that's the only item that we carry or subscribe to that is limited to Acushnet residents. And that's because it's a cost per, um, cost per circ model. So every time someone downloads, money is deducted from an account. So to control that, we just can limit it to Acushnet residents. Otherwise, you know, anybody could be, right. We, all of our budget would be to that, to that account.
Yep.
And, you know, I will say, like, we saw this past January when we compared January 2021 to January 2022, our children's book circulation, print book circulation increased by 75% from one year to the next. Which I think we're going to see that trend just continue as things return to normal. Because our 2019 numbers, it's the first time ever in our history, we circulated over 100,000 items, which was huge. Because at Russell, we would circulate 35,000 to 40,000 items a year. So in 2019, we had this huge year. And I am very confident that that's where we're going to end back up with those big numbers. Because, like I said, people are finding us for the first time. Why they didn't come before, I don't know, but, you know, they're finding us now. Or they're still coming back to us after being away for a couple of years.
And then word of mouth, once, once somebody goes into our library, they just, once they get engaged, they're going to talk about their experience that they had at our library.
Correct. Like, you know, in terms of programming, like I do know, we have regulars who use our library who are not Acushnet residents and you know that from conversation with them. But they were at, you know, another library in their town and someone mentioned, hey, there's a great storytime over in Acushnet. You should go check that out. So they bring their kids over and you might not think of us in terms of business, but, you know, they, not for nothing, they'll go to Acushnet Creamery after they've come to our storytime. They might stop even just at the Dunkin' Donuts on South Main Street and get something, a treat for the kids on the way home. So you might not think of us as revenue generating and we're, I'm sure we're not, you know, that high. But we still are bringing people into the community. And right, then they go back home and they talk about the great experience they had in Acushnet, which is a win-win for all of us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, you just raised, you just made a great point about it being an attraction. And that may be something we should think about as, you know, how can we capitalize on that, you know, from a business perspective? Is that, you know, we've been talking about food trucks in town. We just had an experience with a lady who runs a food truck, Westview Cafe. We're working through the process of allowing people to, you know, on town property and things of that nature. And so if there's ways to use that space and that outside space, especially in the summer, to some entrepreneur wants to do a lemonade, whatever it may be.
Right.
So just think of that in those terms. Mr. Gaspar, you touched on it with the residents. I just look at, when we spend money in town, we're looking for an ROI, you know. And I think this library is a great bang for its buck. What I would ask in return would be, you know, you've got an engaged population that goes there, people who care about the community. If you could help us, I don't know if you've done it before, but, you know, ways that we can inform them of what's going on in town, some of the great things that we have going on. So either one, encourage them to sign up for our alerts.
Sure.
Ask them to like our Facebook page. So, you know, we can let them know. I think one of the things we lack in town is our ability to communicate with our residents. You know, maybe we tried to do it with our Facebook page, but the more we can let people know, you know, posting agendas or, you know, having our meetings on, you know, somewhere where people can watch me, whatever it is, right?
Sure.
I just think that we could use that library and that foot traffic as a way to keep people engaged and informed, you know. You know, we've got so many vacancies of different boards and commissions. So let's think, maybe you could come back to us at some point of some, how we can use the library as a hub to reach our population.
Sure. No, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
If the library director could please inform the board on the difference or impact between the level fund and the other one
Yes.
as it concerns your, the limit on your accreditation.
I sure can, thank you. I did have that as part of this. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'm sure I've spoken about it with you all before and if you've heard me present to Finance Committee ever, I do talk about this with them every year. But we do have something called the municipal appropriation requirement, which is a certain amount of money that we're required or municipalities are required to appropriate for their departments, library departments every year. You take three, the current fiscal year and the two previous fiscal years, you add those figures together, you divide by three, you times by 1.25%, and you get your MAR. So our level funded budget, as it's presented right now, does not meet the MAR for FY23. And this is the first time in my seven years here that our budget does not meet the municipal appropriation requirement. So the level funded budget is $284,779. And our MAR for FY23 is $286,448. Now, of course, I've submitted that budget fully aware that it's not accounting for any increases to the salary lines, the level funded budget, because I know that's still being worked out. And hypothetically, those increases would put us beyond the municipal appropriation requirement of the 286,448. However, that's an awfully close spot to be in. And obviously, the budget with additional funding would put us well above what the municipal appropriation requirement is for FY23.
But does that keep compounding now?
Over time.
The further away you get away from that number?
Correct.
It's a continuous compound interest effect, right?
So what would happen for the next few fiscal years after FY23 is the MAR would be much lower than our appropriated budget hypothetically because you'd be comparing it or adding it to figures that were considerably lower.
Right. Three years ago, it's 278 and.
Correct. So when you take this, so you might see, I might tell you the MAR next year is only 290-something. And you, well, why last year was it? It's because we're, we're adding together two lower figures plus a larger figure.
Mr. Kelly.
Could you discuss with the board that if you did not have the increase of the 19 hours to 35 hours for the children's technician, but you did have the increase in some of the expense items, would that put you within the?
If the, with the additional funded budget, yes, it would. Because in the additional funded budget, the only other line that we've touched is the under-expenses, the 551000, which is our other supplies line, and that's what we use to purchase material. And we've asked for an increase of $3,000 to that line.
Your energy was up about three grand too, wasn't it?
We did that in the level funded also. And that came about after the first Finance Committee meeting where they talked about a 20, putting a 25% increase for Eversource into budgets. And so when we heard that, the Board of Trustees and I, we took that and plugged it into the level funded budget also. Now, since that time, in the, of the first Finance Committee meeting and doing a little more research, those Eversource increases are primarily coming between now and June and not after June of 2022. So that might not be something that even impacts us, but it is in the level funded budget.
Well, already shown, my utility bill was adopted by the.
Ours is up 60, yeah. The library is up 60% this year.
If it comes now, it's going to carry over beyond the fiscal year. But what this shows is that the, if you wanted to keep the accreditation of the library and not increase the funding for the individual, you have that option.
Right, without losing.
The only, the only thing I was going to say, Deena, and I love the work that you guys are doing over at the library, I really do, because I really do. I see it every day, how busy it is. Again, I can't believe how many cars are in and out of that parking lot when you're open, I should say. But this year, and I've said it before to the other couple of budgets that we've had, I think this year is going to be a little more challenging than what most people think based on my review of some, some of the numbers. So it might come crunch time, the board might have to make some tough decisions. Where those tough decisions are going to come from? It's tough to know right now because we don't know what kind of deficit we will have. But it's, the money, there's only so much there to be able to use for budget as budgeting purposes, right? So, you know, Heather from Council on Aging did the same thing with the outreach program coordinator, it was 15, 19,000 bucks, whatever it was. All great reasons to increase a budget and everything else and the board's always very supportive of these kind of issues when we have that kind of programming issues and the needs. We all understand that, but there's just, I think we're going to come, unfortunately, we're not further along in some of our bigger budgets to understand the impacts of those increases. But I think we're going to have crunch. And FinCom is going to have to really sharpen the pencils. So we don't really know yet where we're at.
Sure.
But we're looking at a tough year. And that's with an, with an additional new growth number that we don't normally see. That's the dangerous part that most people aren't looking at, but I do.
Right. And I totally appreciate that and respect that. But it's, it's still felt important to the board and I that we do, we come to you this year with this. Because if I come back next year, if it doesn't work out for this year and I come back next year, I don't want you, well, she's never mentioned she wanted this before. Why is she coming up?
Absolutely, absolutely, you're doing good.
Maybe if it doesn't work out for this year, we'll just have a different conversation about it next year. You know, it's, I mean, I, I understand what you're up against and I know that it's not easy. But like you said, we, we do, we, sure, do we maybe need to put a limit on things too that we do? Of course, maybe we need to put a cap on things sometimes. But sometimes when you're in the moment and you're in that momentum and everyone is like, oh, this is an amazing place. You want to keep making it.
Well, you're feeling good about what you're doing.
Yeah, and the overachiever in you might be like, yes, let's keep doing this because this is what we're here for. You know, I didn't go get my degree to sit in a quiet library. You know, I mean, I want to be in a place that's busy and active and, and doing good for the town. So, you know.
You folks have all done a great job over there, really. I can't commend you enough for everything. The library, Board of Trustees and their support and all your staff, you guys have just done a great job at that library.
Thank you.
Compared to what we had over here.
Right, can you imagine?
Compared to what we did with that library facility when we went through the process of building that library facility. We all were very supportive of that at that time too as well. So it's, it's nice to see, as Mr. Warner says, our ROI, the return on investment is paying off. So it's nice to have that feeling from my perspective as a board member that we supported something, it is given back to the community. It's, it's something that we appreciate, I appreciate for sure.
I'm glad to hear that, good. And I do just want to pedal back to one thing about building on. I just, you know, want to again say, we've got that pavilion this year. And I don't know if you know, but before COVID, we had a very successful summer concert series bringing in, you know, just a mix of people for, you know, Monday night concerts. And our patron services associate Sandra does a fantastic job of booking different acts, you know, so it's not the same kind of music every week. Brings in people from all over. So we've already, we've got a 10-week session planned for the summer. We already have eight weeks booked. It's primarily funded by the Friends of the Library. We'll also use state aid to cover some of the expenses of that. Does not impact taxes whatsoever, but what a great opportunity if you end up doing something with food trucks to, you know, perhaps have a food truck.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the key, right?
At the library, it'll be on Wednesday nights for 10 weeks, starting June, June 22nd. And we'll run through most of the summer. So I'll come back and talk about that too, but I just didn't want to forget to say that right now in this moment because I think that pavilion is going to bring in people who never stepped foot onto our library's property before because we're going to be able to do an awful lot with that space. It's beautiful, you know. As usual, Jim Merritt's done a great job with his crew of buildings. I mean, he's so responsible for that building in my eyes, as you know. So it's, it's, um, I think it's really going to bring it up, us up a notch or two in the eyes of the community. People have, it's gotten so much buzz, people pull in just to ask, what are you doing back there? When's that opening? When are we going to be able to use it?
Mr. Chairman, just a question to Lisa, I don't want to put you on the spot, but to Jamie, but the, our cultural council, right? Do we get money from the state and are we?
Yes.
And is that going to like the concert series or any of that?
We have one, their, their, the Cultural Council is providing one concert this summer.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we applied for one, because we weren't sure where they stood this year.
Right, all right.
We weren't sure if the pavilion was gonna be done when we submitted that grant request, but they are funding one concert this summer.
And they did have a meeting in December, I think that was.
At the library.
Yeah, and they do use the library. And that's when I think they gave you that particular one.
Yes.
And they fund, most of the time, the Cultural Council funds the schools to go on field trips or to have people come to the school.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And, you know, Council on Aging uses it, they have people come and do programs there, too. It is a good, it's very good for the money that, I mean.
Yeah, okay, sorry to get off topic.
That we give, but it is.
Oh, that's all right, I can't wait till when it's finished, I'm gonna have a few potties, David Potties down there.
It's out of selection, you get it.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure your clothes, we'll make sure your clothes when I do that, though.
Yes, definitely. We've already, we've gotta think about what we're gonna do about outdoor cameras for that, because yes, that's gonna be happening in that pavilion with more clothes.
And we'll have to hold an employee appreciation day there.
Wouldn't that be fun? Yeah, that'd be great, I'd love to host that.
Well, thank you very much, Deana.
Thank you, I really thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much. And I always get, you know, a little anxious coming to speak with you, but then, once I start talking and the hands start going, you know, it's all good.
We don't bite.
But I know you don't, I know you don't. But it's what I guess, if I didn't get nervous, then it wouldn't mean that it's important to me, and it is important, and it is important to me, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and I'm sure we'll see each other again.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Jen.
Yes, that's right.
You're an awesome support group.
Oh, I'm lucky, right? You never see library vacancies on that, do you?
Right.
Just saying.
Very gentleman. All right, on to all business, we have a Hamlin Street Bridge man info.
Mr. Chairman, the town of Acushnet has received, under the DOT plan to invest in infrastructure, According to information received by DPW, the state has an advertisement date of June 4th, '22. And it goes, it'll probably take a year and a half, two years, as far as projects go. I have a meeting with Pam Hasner of DOT on the 23rd. They're still on that hybrid Zoom situation. We've been trying to schedule this for a couple of weeks because of her jammed schedule. And we've got it nailed down, and she will give me more information about that. And it looks like that project's a go. We also are going to be talking to her about the municipal small bridge program and some other issues concerning DOT in the area.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kelly hit it spot on. I mean, I was, we were told it was supposed to be spring of 2022, but unfortunately, with the state waiting for environmental permitting due to the pond and the rivers over there, it looks like they just got their permitting for that work. So as Mr. Kelly stated, it'll be June when they go off the bid. So now it's looking like maybe spring of 2023, if we're lucky, we'll get to that point. So it's unfortunate that the cans continuously got kicked down the road on us. I know there's a lot of people in the community have talked to me about when the bridge is gonna get done, when's the bridge gonna get done, because it's really a mess. And we kinda held back on doing anything with paving, because we were under the impression, but we might have to make some kind of a, you know, informative guess of what are we gonna do with the paving over there, and just maybe if we just did a quick overlay, just to cover it up, because it's really bad.
Yeah.
It's really bad condition out there now, so.
It's starting to deteriorate, it is ranked the second worst bridge in Massachusetts.
I believe it.
So it's, I'm glad that it's moving along, moving forward. It still will be, right, it's spring '23, fall '23, because I believe we get like six months or nine months to get bids.
Well, you go through a whole series, including the sub bids and everything else. So it's not an easy process. A bridge project usually takes about two years, you're lucky it's not a TIP project, that could take up to five years. And there's a lot of disruption, you know, very little as far as easements involved in this.
Right, right.
So it's going to be fairly clear cut once they start.
Very good. We'll move on to another item two on the old business. And we're talking about Envoice iCloud, or Envoice Cloud, which would allow residents to pay bills online.
Well, and coordinate some of the issues between golf courts, town hall, et cetera, we hope. We're still on the contractual stage. We were dealing with a salesperson at Envoice Cloud. Our council was dealing through us, we were dealing through him to his council. And, you know, take or dare ever is to chance, just doesn't work in this type of situation. And you want to go council to council. And our council wants to make sure he has permission from us to talk to their council directly and under legal ethics. He can't approach their council until they give their council permission to talk to our council. And we're waiting on them as they go up their managerial food chain to actually effectuate that. It's something, when you look at it, there are two sections of the contract that are exposure in the town and indemnification and exposure, and our council does not wanna see the town exposed and wants to make sure. He says it should be very easy to close the loop once the council talks to council and explains what our issues are. Part of the problem was, I think we were dealing with folks, even though Envoice Cloud does deal with municipalities, we were dealing with someone who is not familiar with municipalities and, in this individual. And they were saying things like five-year contracts, stuff like that. Anybody who knows Massachusetts knows it, three-year maximum.
Any comments, so maybe you can make a motion to?
For our council to talk to their council.
Very good, so moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. New business, warrant articles, we have the upcoming town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a list of people, articles that have either been proposed or I've been told they're going to be proposed, or I thought maybe they should be proposed. Some of them I'm going to wanna remove right now, the town acceptance of Mass General Law 44, Section 53G.
Well, where are we? I was looking at Council on Agents, not Council on.
Yeah, I know.
I was, I'm sorry, I was looking at the CPC stuff, or now I'm somewhere.
Yeah.
On the agenda.
It's more on the front agenda. Front of the book.
I also have some stuff in my report concerning it either way. Would you rather I wait till my report to go through it, or would you want me to do it now?
Type right in? Yeah.
Okay.
Make fun of it.
Mass General Law 44, Section 53G is concerned establishing an account that people who come before the planning board deposit money into, and it's an engineering consultant for the town. We've gone back and forth, Town Council and myself, and the planner, on the most efficient way to do it. And now it looks like, rather than do it as an article accepting the statute, is to put it in the Subdivision Rules of Rights. It's just a cleaner way to do it.
So any developer with business in town would put some money like in an escrow account, and it'd be for third-party review of their plans?
Correct.
Would that fall, would that fall, though, for, because I know, I know we were just dealing with that in CONCON, too. Something about 53G accounts and how the money is gonna be getting, the checks get deposited with no town account set up and things of the like.
The town accounts have to be set up, and they're set up individually. I've talked to the treasurer collector, I've discussed how it should be done. Accounts are set up, they're not interest-bearing accounts, but they're set up individually. The, or because most banks wanna do it that way, money's deposited, engineering is done. The engineers are for our engineer consultants. The money's paid out of that account to the engineer. Anything that's left in the account is returned to the party who's the applicant.
Okay, very good.
Planning Board is bringing the Bradford Street rezoning up. I discussed it with the town planner, and we've, it was my advice to only include two lots rather than a larger section, because I think it would look like spot zoning. Otherwise, this looks like we're just drawing the line properly, and it would be more likely to get past a review on the state level if we do it this way. And they will be having hearings and presenting it to you.
Okay, because I'm from, kinda, I just thought a little bit about it. I know the gentleman put Bradford Street in with the assumption of building eight house lots. And when one side is zoned, when he found out one side of the street is zoned, the village district and the other is residential A. So because of the lot size changes, like in the village, you can have a 10,000 or 15,000 square, 10,000 square foot lot.
10,000.
But across the street, you need 60,000 square feet.
There, there's one section, one lot, that's affected for this individual. There's one that's right next to it, right along the street, that is not this individual's, but you couldn't just do this and do that. Originally, the planning board was saying to do multiple lots, and then, in effect, recreate the problem in reverse, but recreate the problem that they had, because instead of having a straight boundary for the zone district, it would start to look like a jigsaw puzzle. And you don't wanna have that when you go for straight state review.
So this would be an article that the planning board would be proposing?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's, they have to go through all the hearings, et cetera, and the advertisements.
Next one, we have solar moratorium article.
This is an article that Planning Board has talked to Town Council about. They're looking at a proposed 180-degree moratorium on the solar arrays, while they get the zoning in place for vegetated background, vegetated buffers, et cetera. And it's going, after that point, that'll give you enough time to get the zoning article to Fall Town Meeting and then have it go through.
You just said 180 degrees, you mean 180 days?
180 days.
Okay, all right, okay, well, I know you.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see this moving forward, you know, we had discussed this as a board several months ago. And I just think it gives us an opportunity to catch our breath. I think we've all established our support for solar arrays over time, but, you know, there's been a, you know, an uptick. And so let's pump the brakes for a little bit and come up with a strategy to deal with the next wave, so I'm really thrilled to see this go forward.
Okay, very good.
The next article that they, there was discussion was the Altacushnet Titleist Property, a rezoning on that. That one is going, it's not going to be presented, I vow, said to be withdrawn. I'm talking to some parties involved. There's too many issues, it would not be ready for this town meeting, and there's too many issues that the town needs to address, including water sewer, egress entrance, 21E issues as far as hazardous materials. If you're gonna do it right, take your time, put the package together and do it right. But you also have other issues coming down the tracks, so to speak. In that, you've got Church Street and the station over there, and the impact as far as if you become, because you're within three miles, it becomes affected by the MTA overlay zoning. It's, this is too large, too important, impacts too many people, not to have every one of the parties in the room and make sure it's done right. And then you have to make sure as a board that it's done for the benefit of the town.
Very good.
Sounds about right. The train, the train station thing, that's kinda, I think we had a short conversation on it when it was first kinda being done, and then we were talking about we would get hit with an assessment, because we're in this proximity thing.
We do get. That's correct.
Which, I don't know how that, I don't wanna speak on camera with this, but I know that that assessment thing and how it will impact.
There's a lot.
The residents, quite honestly, I guess.
But there's a lot more than that concerning there, there's effect to zoning, there's a whole separate issue with the Chapter 40R. There is, Governor Baker has a whole new section about multifamily housing within a certain area from a major train hub. So, you know, this whole thing is too many swirling.
To try to jam it through with that, prop bedding and, you know, oh, I understand.
There's a lot to be discussed, I guess, now that the train station brings that element into the equation. I think that's for all of us to kinda get our hands around it, figure it out, and.
Do we look at it as a, as an opportunity, or do we look at it as a threat?
What, the train station?
Yeah.
Both, that's how I'm doing it.
Depends, right, so is it an opportunity to maximize something there for local businesses, whatever, you know?
Oh, it's, it's something that is going to be done carefully. And this board will be involved from soup to nuts, because you've got too many issues. And you're lucky you have KP laws, your council, because they have enough experts up there, and they represent enough of the MBTA communities. There are 175 communities that are MBTA communities right now, and none of them include any of these along the South Coast Rail. And the T is not in good financial shape, and so they're gonna be looking for things.
I smell a taxation without representation scenario developing.
All right, that's, well, you know, it's concerning, the assessment thing that, you know, hasn't been announced yet, whether we have to figure that out. And then you kinda look at how that's gonna impact our constituents and the community as a whole, and then you start engaging with this kind of zoning and how we can get some benefit from that, from developers to kinda offset, probably. So it's all, it's a collaborative effort, I guess we're gonna have to start taking. And it's nice with the public-private partnerships that we've had, talked about, so like the Monorail, and I've talked about things like that on camera, where you're kinda involved in public and private partnerships when you're doing certain kind of things to make it more cost affordable. So we'll see where it ends up, I mean, the train station, you know, it's not something I'm a big fan of, but it is what it is, and we gotta deal with it as it comes. And that's, that's our job to figure this out, and I'm happy, Mr. Kelly's here to help us navigate that.
And one of the other things, just to put it in the back of the board's mind. And one of the other things, just to put it in the back of the board's mind, is with the legislative delegation, you're going to have, be needed to lobby them because you're gonna be seeing traffic along the access routes to these, this station.
Right.
And so you're going to have to make sure, because this is a state entity, that the state starts to pony up some money to make sure those access routes are right. And one of them being the whole area in Kushner Avenue middle and that whole area is.
As well as Sluggler Street, so that's gonna be a straight shot.
This whole part of it.
It's a straight shot, right?
Cause everybody from behavior's gone through a Kushner to get there, right?
Right.
And you're gonna have to.
Absolutely.
DPW's gonna have to look at it and you're gonna have to go to those legislative people and say, we need some mitigation help.
Well, fortunately for us, the chairman of the transportation department, Bill Strauss, the transportation, House Transportation Committee, his only section of a Kushner is this area. This is his new district and I know he's gonna come in with Rep. Schmidt and Representative Henry. So we've got a laundry list of things that he can talk about. Litmus test.
Yeah, but it's, don't let, don't let it go by the way. This is, this is something that is an opportunity if it's done right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, the historical commission came in. I have, don't know what's in the community preservation, what, how you're looking at this. But this is their list, correct?
Yes.
Correct, they're looking for.
The windows.
Windows.
The museum, a fence for the museum and Perry Hill Church. Forget what she was asking for, but.
Sheet rock and things of the na, of the line inside of the church.
The three requests come out to ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yeah, the bulk of that seventy-two is a lot of sheet rocking and things of that nature. But the inside part of the church, I don't know what, what we have. And CPC for, under the historical category and things.
Yeah, unfortunately Melissa was trying to get something done, so I couldn't get that print, like total funding for historical and all that stuff. But um.
That's on me. We have to close the books.
Right.
And do Schedule A. And I told the finance team I wanted it done by this weekend. Because if we don't do it, that impacts also the schools and Schedule nineteen. And it could disrupt the schools getting the chapter seventy money they need. So I, I took it as a priority that we're gonna get this done. Because closing the books should have been done December thirty-one. And Schedule A, the latest should have been on January thirty-one.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gasman.
Out of, out of the gate, looking at the three, without knowing, I, I know that there's, there's adequate funding. And I know there's an absolute need for the windows and the, and the fences adequate funding for, so for preliminary. I don't know when the CPC's holding a meeting, but preliminary, I, I'd be more than happy to endorse the windows.
Right.
For a starter and, and the fence doesn't seem like it's a lot of money either. So it's, it's sharp money, seventy-two Ds. I don't know how much money's in there, but I know there's enough money in there to cover the windows. Something that she's been looking for, Ms. Pauline Taxaro from the historical commission's been looking to do for quite some time. It's desperate need to build it for these windows. So I would endorse those two for now. And then figure out what we have in CPC funding for the category.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
So I don't know. Lisa, you have any idea when CPC is gonna meet?
Um, I did talk to Mark Sinorezio, um, I think a week or so ago. Um, he asked me to try to get things together under one, around that committee. So, um, I was hoping to ask you gentlemen to, um, if maybe Kara Koska might be interested in do. I mean, they, they probably hold two to three meetings at the most in a year. Um, they do have funding in their administrative, um, line items. And if they would, if she's willing to do it, um, appoint Kara to at least do the agenda. And accept all these and then Mark can present to the CPC, cause he's the chief person. He can present to the CPC and we can, once we find out, cause I know Chad from the park is gonna ask for some money.
Right.
I would imagine.
Right.
Um, so, you know, between historical park, um, that's all I've kind of heard from. I don't know if there's anybody else that's gonna look for any funding.
I'll check with them anyway. I say, I know they might, they did the second phase of the soccer field. So I don't know if they're looking to final, do the final. But that was, you know, again, I talk about ROI, that was a good, good bank of the bucks.
Oh, yeah. You know, just communicate with the, the leagues. The Chad's already aware of from Park, Pauline's already aware of it, obviously. Um, and we, we don't wanna neglect that at CPC. It's outside of the scope of, of two and a half and a new growth. So, and I know, I know there's funding there, but I just don't know the exact amounts in there.
Right, that's me too.
As I said in the beginning for the board, this is an informational list that we're going through.
Great.
The next two items are the DPW asks. Ten-wheeled sander plow is about two hundred and eighty K. The sliding sander for the snow truck is fifty K. Now, there are a couple of issues the board should understand about this. These are the prices now. If you don't get them at these prices this year, they can go up. Also, it's going to take, if you don't order them now, it's similar to what you heard from the golf course.
Right.
If you don't order them now and the next, and you wait maybe a year to order them, it could take, because of the supply chain, two years after that. They're looking at possible eighteen month delivery of the truck.
Well, we waited that long on our animal control officer's truck.
Right, that's correct.
Three years, two and a half years ago, we got an appropriation from town meeting. And I think she finally got to drive her truck two months ago, if you're lucky, a month ago, right? So we've seen it, we'll have that discussion when articles come in, depending on free cash and things of the like. I just want, I just wanna mention that the, the sander for the snow truck, that's for truck number sixteen. It's for a current vehicle that we already own.
Correct.
But we don't have a standard that goes in it. The new, the new truck comes like the other one that Dan bought with the dump body. He's got the belt in it and all you do is hook up a little gizmo on the back, it's pretty neat. And it just, so you don't need to put a C N unit inside the truck. But the other truck doesn't have that, so you would need actual, you know, you see those big ugly sanders boxes inside the back of a truck? That's what that is and it's for truck number sixteen, which is a current ten-wheeler of ours.
And as the selectman said, it's probably a free cash article. But until we close the books to Schedule A and get a free cash certified by DOR, we're not gonna know what we have to spend. And we're, I had a conference with DOR this week. I begged as far, begged forgiveness and then begged that they, because of our short budget cycle, when we have to know what we're doing, that they please get us as much information as they can, as quickly as they can. And it's, they seem to understand our dilemma with the new treasurer collector, new accountant, new assistant accountant and no assistant treasurer collector, that they are helping us. And they're in effect helping mentor our folks, so we get them through this.
Very good, great, thank you.
Under the BOS ones, these are just my suggestions that I'm seeing what the board would discuss. As usual, free cash to the stabilization fund. You need to have a five to six percent stabilization funds balance to your total budget to keep your bond rating.
We exceed that.
But I'm just saying, so it's always good to put money in the bank.
Right, absolutely.
I'm also looking to establish, under the mass general laws, and it is allowed, a unfunded retirement liability stabilization fund. And what you would do is you'd put money in that and you'd start to build up the fund to pay for retirement sick leave buybacks. And that way you wouldn't have to.
Compensatory, compensated balances budget. You'd kinda kick that out, out of the budgeting process if you built a stabilize, is that what you're talking about? That's that compensated balances budget that we talked, I talked about a little bit inside the FinCon joint meeting.
Yep.
So that's creating a little stabilization.
And it's a bank account that's there.
Right.
I also, I know you have an infrastructure stabilization account. I'm suggesting you also keep funding that. But I think you should need beyond an infrastructure, a capital project stabilization fund. And that would be beyond the infrastructure. You put money away. It's just another bank account, but it's a specific one where you can do it for capital projects. Whether it be a specific building project, it's above and beyond your infrastructure, roads, utilities.
And regular stabilization, cause we would normally turn to that if we needed it, right?
Yeah, but, but this is a specific one and you're allowed to do it. And you're allowed to keep it separate from the stabilization fund. And it's good practice to take your free cash beyond the articles that like the dump truck and, or the ten-wheeler and the sander. And you, what you see, you put in the stabilization funds, they're your rainy day funds.
Do you need, you, with, with these kind of accounts that you're talking about, cause it's kinda like new territory for us? Cause we, we originally only had a regular stabilization fund. And then last year, we created a infrastructure stabilization fund, which we, we endorsed, which is a great idea, um, to do things of the like. With the one that you're talking about now, like a newer one, does that require a two-thirds vote to get money out? So they, oh, no matter what kind of stabilization fund, we would have to wait for a town meeting?
Yes.
And it would require a two-thirds majority?
It would allow proper planning beforehand, proper design of funding. And then you could, you could combine the amounts you have in these various stabilization funds or mesh them with your five-year capital plan.
Okay.
And you know what you're doing and you've got these accounts there and they're safeguarded.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I also am advising that you continue to put cash into the OPEB trust fund. That is something that if you, you do not wanna have a management letter on that. You do not want, if you need to borrow money to have your bond rating affected by the fact that your OPEB account does not show a deposit every year. They're not, they don't really care yet how close you come to your OPEB actuarial figure. But they wanna see.
Good faith effort.
An effort every year, correct, a good faith effort.
Well, we've just established a trust fund.
It was a couple of years ago, but I guess it wasn't established right. And we have, we have, I don't know, four, five hundred thousand.
Four hundred and twelve.
I don't, I don't know the, the actuarial, but I, I'm sure it's in the millions.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, forget about that. I was just talking about from what we did as a board. But the one thing I notice is, I don't, when I look through last year's budget, there's no budget for OPEB. So it's like, kinda like, you know, it's a mystery on how much we have. So I, I'd like a budget created for OPEB, right? To show the budget, OPEB budget.
Well, this would be by article, but.
Right.
But what, but the.
We don't know what the balance is, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I know what the balance is, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, that's.
So I just, so I just signed off, I signed off two months ago. I didn't address the trust.
I'd like to have it on paper as a record, you know, and put it in with the budget so that we have OPEB trust and we know what the hell it is. And then we could do it, like town administrator would do an update and saying, this is what we got on a, a return on our, you know, the, the, the trust will deliver a certain return depending on what the markets are doing and where the state, cause we're in the state fund. So we know what we're doing and we know what the interest is and what we made on the fund and it would, every year it would go up. And we can measure that, right?
I, I think it's advisable in the budget book. If I'm designing the budget book, I would advise that you not only have that, you have in effect a balance sheet for all your stabilization funds. And you show how it's growing year by year. If there is a major project that you've taken out of the stabilization fund, it shows that too.
Great.
It's, it's.
Better record keeping.
Right.
It's like kitchen table economics where you're sitting there and you've got a savings account at the house and you're keep putting money in to redo your kitchen. Well, you wanna see the money going in and then when you redo the kitchen, you wanna see what you're spending out of the account to redo the kitchen.
At least you wanna keep track of what your wife's spending the money on, right?
And here is something that is, and it's something I would like to talk to the board about. It is, you at one point accepted the statute for an elders community service program.
Right, we called it the senior work program, maybe?
And I wanna just brief the board how other communities do it. They fund it, eligible participants. You accepted it actually in the year two thousand and you've never funded it. Eligible participants could receive up to fifteen hundred dollars in a calendar year that can be used only to pay their real estate tax. And what happens is there's guidelines as far as, on the, people have to own or reside in the home. The household annual income is within the guidelines set for, and it has to be equal of, or less than the very low income household limit as established by HUD. An ability to perform the work and an ability that the skills of the individual conform to a position you want done. It's usually run in cooperation with the office of the board of selectmen and the council on aging. Council on aging does the intake, board of selectmen does the assignment of the individuals. The funding never leaves the treasurer collector's office. It's a voluntary program as far as they do voluntary work, they get credit for the work. And let's say they have a six thousand dollar real estate tax bill. Then one quarter of that tax bill is paid for, up to fifteen hundred, providing they've provided the adequate hours.
Well, we've seen some departments come in front of us, Gulf, last, last month, saying that they need employees, that they need starters or bag people. COA, lost, they're looking for people, volunteer type work. You know, depending on how the number of hours, you know, I know you wrote eight dollars an hour here and that. I don't know if that's an older version or if that's, if that you would compensate.
Yeah, because you have to remember the federal minimum wage is what the.
It's seven hundred quarters.
Yeah, and that's what the municipality's minimum wage is technically. I know to recruit workers for full-time positions, you've got to.
Pay more, right.
Pay a lot more because otherwise they'll be going down asking if you want fries with that.
So that's the, I actually wrote down the, I was like, is it legal to pay?
Yeah, I know.
I just wrote it, cause I was like, so this must be a document from twenty years ago. But he just explained it very well, so I'm fine with it.
And it's your determination, we can set an hourly rate. The real important thing about this. The real important thing about this is it helps seniors on fixed income stay in their home.
Correct.
And it gives the town access to a pool of talent that is usually fabulous. I'll tell you, in another municipality, and I had folks that were in the senior work off program that worked at the DPW.
There you go, Dan.
They were former mechanics. And they did light mechanical work and they did what I call sweep-up work and stuff like that. And my guys in, at the DPW barn that I'm thinking about loved it because this one individual worked one day a week, couple, three or four hours doing that. And it was on a Friday and every Friday he showed up with a huge crock pot of chili. He really liked it.
In our town, they better bring the keg.
That's good.
But with town hall, it's great to fill in and it's very helpful for the town Office of the Selectment while we're preparing for town meetings. Because I had a crew of ladies that put together all the books and everything else and it was fabulous. And they worked like one month a year, came in and did that. And it was the same crew that did it every year. You didn't have to train them after the first year and it was fabulous.
Right, very good.
So I will be coming forward with that, but. Conservation Commission, Board of Health are going, want to suggest that they be a reorganization where the Board of Health part-time person goes and works at the Conservation Commission full-time. And that, that person gets a change in classification that is paid for, the increase in the salary is paid for out of the wetlands protection fee fund, which would be about $3,000, they tell me. And they asked me to ask the board if the board thought I should continue down that road and if it's a good idea or if the board wants to talk to me privately about it, that's fine, I'm just bringing it out there because they wanted to bring it in as an article and I said, no, let's talk about it. Because there is some issues about the authorization of using the wetlands money, how we do that, whether it be an article. I think it would be more likely when you make your original motion, if you want to go down this route, when you make your original motion on the funding sources for the budget, you could put that in one of the, as one of the funding sources. Because there is quite a bit of money in that fund right now.
We couldn't create like we have in other departments, I think PAC department, DPW things, we have revolving funds that we vote every year, library's got a many.
This is not technically a revolving fund, it's where the fees are paid. I actually in another town paid for half the salary of the clerical person who supported the Concom, out of that fund.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking at coming down the pike.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
The audience.
Oh.
My name, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure where the board feels that they need to go with this. My understanding is that this has been a union situation. I collect close to $100,000 in fees every single year in my department, yet for four years I've tried to get a reclassification of my clerk and I've gotten nowhere with it. I first started with Mr. Noble, was told to apply, you know, to the union steward at the time, who was Sue Picard. Sue left, I heard nothing from her. I went back to Julie, Julie said, well, the board's thinking of reclassification of all the clerical staff, maybe we'll get something back at that point in time. Then we applied to Roger, when Roger was chairman of the board here, he insisted that he would take care of the situation. We never heard anything at that point in time. I've just reapplied back to the new union steward and still haven't heard anything. I just think initially when I came into the town, I had no clerk. My, my clerk was a senior clerk, but she had fallen, broken her shoulder and never, never returned. So I, I went for the first six months without a clerk at all and was helped by Patrice La Forest, who was the clerk in the conservation office. She was great, but she went to Rochester on a full-time job, which the town wouldn't give her here. The situation I had was that then the board asked, you know, for all the departments to ask for 2% cut in our full, full budget. I went to the town administrator at the time and said, listen, I'll take an 11% cut in budget because of the economics I can do with a part-time clerk. And the board agreed with me at that point in time, not knowing then that I was going to have to fight to get additional hours back in my department. I mean, my department's just as busy as every other department in town, yet I only have a clerk at 25 hours a week and she does all the work. But doggone it, reclassify her, let her become a senior clerk, let her be an administrative assistant. If my fees have to pay that difference, I mean, the honest with it, from clerk to senior clerk, it's only 50 cents more an hour, but, you know, it's not that much money, but I mean.
Have you met with Jamie yet?
I was just going to say, this.
I've been told for three years, David, that this has something to do with the union.
With all due respect, this is not a subject on the agenda right.
Right. Jim, this.
But it should, it should come into.
Perspective issues that Jamie wanted us to get ahead of, so we're not making any decisions around that.
But you should come in and talk to me about that.
Well, like I said, Jamie, I, for years I've been told different people need to receive this, first the union stewards, so I've applied to two union stewards, then it was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, then it was the town administrator. And, you know, I've not heard one word back anywhere, so I really don't know where to go. If I go to you, I'll do that.
It's the board and the town administrator, if the town wants to do it, that would present it to the union. Department heads shouldn't work directly with the union representatives.
Right, so bring it to, sit with Jamie, come up with a proposal and just like the Concom did. I think that's probably the best.
Actually, I've given almost 11 or 12-page documents to four different groups.
These, they've been here for two weeks, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The board members can approach me on this if there's an issue.
I was going to mention that I would like to talk about this in private, would you, Mr. Kelly? Just because this was a conversation piece that did come up several months ago, maybe a year ago, whatever it may have been. And we talked about this and it was going to spiral out. When you do a reclassification for one individual, then the other individuals are going to make the case, well, I've been here more time and I need to be reclassified. So it's just, it's one of those things where you can never just do for one, you're going to do for all and that's the mentality of some people, so it's a, it's an offline conversation.
I, I agree, but I will say this, and you know my background in human resource and my background in negotiating contracts.
Absolutely.
Tenure might impact on a longevity payment, it doesn't impact on a skill set. Reclassification can only be built on skill sets and what the job is involved. And this is, the Concom and the Board of Health are going to have to make their case on this. And they just wanted to inform the board that they're going to be starting that conversation.
Fine, thank you.
Yep.
I, especially when we're doing negotiations, I think we, I think you're right, we have to walk carefully.
That's the time that this should be discussed.
Yep. Health insurance, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, going up?
Well, we know they, we, we know they said it was going up. And I had a meeting with the health insurance folks. And to give you a little background, insurers look to have their cost to the premium we pay. They're looking to have cost to premium somewhere between 75% and at the highest 89%. So they have that cushion above that. They'd really like to see it between 75 and 85. We've had, and I'm skirting HIPAA, we've had a number of catastrophic cases recently. And the insurer considers a catastrophic case that the costs are above $50,000. They gave us a list of eight plus.
Wow.
Some of them were hundreds of thousands. I've been doing this a little while and my discussion with them is, okay, let's look at case by case by case, not with name, not with real diagnosis, because that's restricted. There are two cases that will not be reoccurring. So I'm arguing you take that liability right off the top. There were a couple of cases that were within $2,000 to $3,000 of the $50,000 limit. I'm arguing that can go either way, but it won't climb much higher. So we really have maybe four cases that we should be concerned with. And it doesn't justify a 15% increase in premium. That's the first thing. The second thing, I almost went up like a Roman candle on, was they were looking at increase year over year. One of the years they were looking at that had a substantial increase to the next year was the COVID year. They said, oh, look, you've got 127% increase. I said, during the COVID year, no one went to the doctor. So throw that year out, go for the previous year. I mean. You can be a pig, but don't stick your head all the way in the trough. And that's what they were doing. It was in, and the resulting large cost to premium percentages they were looking at were based on a false base.
So that's good, because I think when we talked about that number, it was somewhere out, we were told somewhere around an 8% increase. Thank God I used the word preliminary.
Yeah. So they were trying to push an easy solution and make some money.
Yeah, sure.
And we pushed back. Their thing was better for the insurer. And the second thing they said, well, is if you don't like the increase, then start looking at design plan changes. And I'm sorry, but you don't have enough time to do design plan changes and that's the easy solution. So I told them, we're done have an issue, you're going to have to go back, I have ways of challenging this, let's look at it and you come back with a new estimate. And that's what they're going to do.
Are there other vendors out there, Jamie? Or is this?
No, we're stuck, we're stuck with this one because I just came on the job. I would have, I would have been able to put this out on an RFP, but you're going to have to put this out on an RFP like October, November.
Yeah, okay. Let's do that. Something that we look at, I mean, so often, but with him just coming on.
I would say this, Jamie, does it help your case if we were to make a motion today?
No.
To put it out for bid, you know, an RFP, develop an RFP for October?
No, no, they don't care.
Okay, all right.
You got to remember that the other problem is, and this is what I think they're playing with.
Now, keep going.
Okay. This is what they're playing with Harvard Pilgrim and Tufts are combining. And so they're looking to maximize this as a premium here, Harvard Pilgrim is, because when they're combining two with Tufts, if they're bringing in more money than Tufts, they're the big dog.
Right, right. Yep.
So what did they want to do?
Doesn't matter if I go out of order and put that up, you know, the chairman. I'm just along for the ride.
Do you need a brief reset?
No, Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that. So he can do it now or he?
He can do it now.
Okay, we just received communication, town council has an issue and the, he would ask that the exec, it won't go to executive session now. And we come back to public works after that and the other is on the agenda.
Okay, Dan, I'll put you in right after executive.
Okay.
Is this by impression or is this by Zoom?
Zoom.
By Zoom.
And we promise.
You want me to leave? Then you call, you got, she could text me, you got my number, right? So you guys.
I mean, we could probably fit in Dan right now so he could leave.
Okay.
I think we're going to need.
To get a Zoom thing.
We're going to need more time with him.
Okay.
And we promise it won't be his line, it's the police chief took last night.
All right, so you want me to head out, you guys will text me then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but we just.
I didn't know what, what came through.
Got to make sure what we have to operate with, right?
Yep.
So we'll do what we need to do.
All right, just going into executive session, we'll do a roll call vote and then we'll put them up.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to executive session. Executive session under general large, half the 30A subsection 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, PJ Keating. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chancellor declares, the board will return to public session. Roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gaspar?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We will return, we will return to executive session to return to public session. Thank you. Very good, we have adjourned from executive session and are back to public session. Number, next on the agenda, on the, on the new business, is Police Department resignation of Travis Farah. Motion to accept?
Agreed with the Brett.
Second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine. Very good. Next we have appointment of Assistant Treasure Collector, Eric Betts.
Mr. Chairman, we made a preliminary offer. It was accepted and subsequently she is withdrawn from consideration. We have, one reason that was given was that she considered the pay scale too low. That was given to me by the treasure collector. We've, bringing in in the next couple of days, the other two people that were interviewed, I will be involved in those interviews and interview with them. They do have some previous experience, so, and I'm going to see if we need to bring them in at a recruitment rate, that could be anywhere from step one to step five. The. Original. Advertisement was. For forty-one thousand and change to fifty-one thousand and change. A grade nine. Based on a recruitment rate, you're probably looking between forty-three thousand and forty-five. If they have sufficient municipal experience and you're budgeted for it. And it will not cause any salary collision in the office.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, well, just leave it to Mr. Kelly to bring somebody forward.
Okay. Very good, next we have chief procurement officer discussion.
Discussion reviewed managed prison and a potential vote taken. You need a chief procurement officer to issue RFPs. That's basically what you need, you do not have a chief procurement officer right now. The board needs to vote to appoint one. You've got a technology purchase coming down the pike with the police of over fifty K. We're looking right now if that can be a sole source purchase. But either way, you're going to need a chief procurement officer to certify that it is a sole source. And then you're going to have a number of RFPs coming down the pike. That you're going to need a chief procurement officer on.
I got a simple solution for you, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Kelly as our chief procurement officer.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Careful what you wish for.
I'm just making sure.
No, you're good.
Cover the base.
We're rolling.
Next we have golf management, operation committee requests spending from article nine from twenty nineteen town meeting in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Is there article funded in that article?
Yes, I have that.
I make a motion to approve the spending.
Second.
For in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, as presented.
It's on the second page.
Okay. I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Thank you. And this is a record, just briefly, I'll just say, this is the record of all. Outstanding monies that were approved at town meetings over the years that haven't been spent yet.
That's what we requested.
Okay, very good.
And I think it's time to clean up a bunch of those articles. But that, that will be in a future meeting, we'll put together a package to present to the board.
I agree.
Very good.
Does that, does it take town any vote to wipe out an article?
What you do is you list all the articles in one article. And you, you can use it to. Transfer into funding your, your capital articles that you would also use with free cash.
Very good.
And any of the articles that you do not want to do, you can reauthorize.
Okay, very good.
Very good.
If the two years are all the right, to reauthorize.
You don't want them beyond two years.
Okay, very good.
Unless they're, if they're beyond two years, they really should have been in a revolving fund.
Okay. Well, let me just touch upon this last one here, reserve fund request, border health, community nurse modifications, six thousand dollars, I guess with COVID tracing.
Contact.
Contact. Tracing, okay.
And we're, we're going to be six thousand dollars in the red. There is going to be a, this is the first of a couple that are going to be coming into the board. We have an issue with DOR fiscal year twenty-one, there was eleven thousand deficit in snow and ice that was never taken care of. It should, according to DOR, it should come out of the reserve fund. The administrative, administrator's office didn't put it forward, it should have been put forward. It's gonna ding us on free cash for eleven grand, but we still gotta pay it. And in my conversations, so there is enough in the reserve fund to take care of the six thousand. It will be enough to take care of the eleven thousand. You're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand left in the reserve fund.
One thirteen, five ninety-one.
It's fine.
Very good, I have a motion.
Motion, motion to, he's gonna need, because he said he's got sixty-five hundred in his present balance in his appropriation. But he probably needs that money for year end, so that's why he needs a full six thousand. Make a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer.
Second.
Six thousand bucks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Mr. Manad. How are you this evening?
Good, how we got you, you're on the clock.
There you go.
Oh, you should have seen him last night, he was.
Never Mr. Richmond again for us.
You were very polite in letting him go first.
Never again.
They said he would take longer and it was.
Well, he's got a few more budgets.
No, but he was, at least a half an hour shorter.
All right.
Anyways.
Oh, are we going over budgets or are we going, what are we gonna go over?
We're going over, we have a recycling center discussion.
Yep. Okay.
And the status of roads.
The status of roads, yeah.
Which one you got? The status of roads, let's stop with that.
Let's go to the potholes. All right.
A lot of them. Are we talking like for ones we want to go up for this year's chapter ninety? No, that's roads, that's roads, I don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, Dan, I think, you know, when I talked to Jamie about this, as you know with the storm, we've got a lot of calls about potholes. And just get a sense of what your game plan is, you know, the way people are reporting, is that working for you?
It's actually been working out. Problem with, you know, like a couple of weeks ago, we were just having rain every single day, couldn't get no mix nowhere. We do have a, you know, a hot box now, which it works very well with the hot mix instead of. In the meantime, I bought a pallet of fifty bags of the, you know, the mix that you can just dump in the hole. And you supposedly dump them in water. Which was seventeen dollars a bag, which was close to nine hundred dollars. And I went through it, the fifty bags in four hours.
And it's garbage.
Yes, and it pops right out, so that's where we're at, as far as like the potholes, so the first sunny day we got, and we've been actually on them every day, so.
I mean, this is, I mean, I think this is a bread and butter issue, these are the things that our residents see. So now with Jamie on board, if you can communicate these things to him, that if we can post messages on Facebook, whatever it is, we gotta let people know. That we're on the case, we understand what's going on, you know, if there's a supply chain issue. But I think it's really important that we let residents know that we're, we understand, you know, we see the potholes, we know they're out there. That we've got a mechanism where we want to pay, we want to make this a top priority.
And actually, the other issue is like, the only place that does have mix is in Avon. So we've been actually going to Avon every morning to pick the mix up. Again, our hot box, you know, we get, you know, two, three thousand at a shot. But they really only, by the time they go up there, get the load come back, do the potholes, you really don't get.
Sorry to bother you over the weekend, but there was a crater, like right on Peckham Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Called into the police department.
That's a doozy.
You know, even if it's just a cone or something.
Well, that's what we actually want to do, and actually, we want to put barrels and cones out. I can't believe people like will still hit the cones right on.
Cause they're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, so. Again, that's kind of what we had to do, and I think most towns are in the same predicament.
Oh, yeah.
Even in Avon, you know, one of our guys told me, they said it was a line of trucks over there, they're from all over the place, situated everywhere. Coming into Avon to get the mix, so it's, you know, it's not only us, it's everybody else.
It's winter time, they're not active doing it, you know, and there's that place that he's talking about, Rochester Batumis wasn't doing it, so now they're forced driving out to Avon, and it's the one place that's actually doing to capitalize on it, but it's. Again, it's, it's winter time, I mean, that, the stuff he said he bought with all the, in the bags, that's, that's garbage.
Like I said, I had to do something, Kevin, because we were.
Yeah, no, I understand what I'm just saying, I feel bad because you're trying to do what you can do to fill whatever you got, but the reality of it is you get a truck that drives over, it's gonna stick to the tire and pull it right out of the ground, it's. You know, it's nothing we can do, and I hope that, you know, the townspeople understand that we, we do what we can, but it's winter time and you're gonna deal with potholes and. That the road breaks, that's the problem when you're not, you know, we don't have enough money to crack seal in, the seal cracks, and. Once you get those big cracks coming in the ground and you get that frost adhesive, pops that tire out of there, that's how you get a pothole, and. That's why, you know, there's been a lot of emphasis from this board and support from this board to help the DPW with the paving machine and. Getting that kind of work out there and getting things done and trying to do a better job with our roads, because we're gonna lose a ton of them if we don't do a better job.
Absolutely.
So we gotta do more, more, more. Infrastructure, baby.
So Mr. Manad, there's something we had to mention here, recycling center discussion.
Yep, this is actually for, I wanted to put up a building in the back, and it'd be in-house. What I was looking to do is something like an eighty by hundred, and it's kind of the store. The equipment that we have outside now in, I don't think, well, the reason why I'm looking to do this is because the, the recycling budget actually. I think we're gonna have a little extra because the recycling number went way down. At the beginning, it started at a hundred and eight, then it went down to they was paying us money, you know, like not much, but a little bit of money, and now it just went back, and this one it started on the increase again, and it went to fourteen dollars a ton. So there's definitely gonna be some money available.
Within the budget.
Within the budget from last year's, correct, so wouldn't be, you know, nothing that would have to go far. Again, I don't think it's gonna take care of the whole building, I'm thinking it's fifty to seventy-five thousand is gonna be in the number we're gonna have. I looked into like money for trusses and tin and stuff like that, and again, this is something you're gonna buy kind of now before it goes up and, you know, at least order it. So, which is probably between the thirty and forty thousand, between the trusses and the roof tin and the framing, so this is no tin on the outside, no. You know, we'd go, because we went texture one eleven for boards, it's on the swap shop now and stuff.
Right.
Again, that's on the increase too. So again, I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that, or if it's money that we're gonna need to go back in the general fund later, it's, it's just something I'm throwing out there, and it's something I think we need there, it's. We do get a lot of equipment outside, and the problem is, one of the problems is, is like when we go to work on the Sanders or anything like that, that garage we have in the back. Which holds our big trucks and big equipment, because the front garage is too short a door, so the big stuff don't fit inside the, the front part of the garage. We work on something, it has to stay in there, so now that equipment that was parked in there, that's nice to be heated, like Sanders and loaders and stuff like that, like, you know, you want warm when you get out there. Get a call at two in the morning, you want to have it, you know, the building heated, you know, so you need stock, a cold start diesel in the winter, you know what I mean, it's nice to have it heated, so. But again, if we're working on something, now that piece of equipment has to sit outside overnight, you know, so that's.
Can we, you know, direct Mr. Manad to come up with a plan and then come back to the board, because right now you're just kind of talking concept and maybe put pen to paper and.
Yep.
You know, we can assess.
Some more defined price ready.
Yeah, there's more downside.
I, I had a conversation with, with Mr. Manad when I was up in the office. He had mentioned it to me, it was, it was a while ago he had mentioned something, because I had mentioned something, I don't even know, it was probably two years ago, and I said, Jesus, you know, when he did the lean-to thing over the gas pump, it came out really nice, right, metal structure, obviously, but he did that, and I was like. With, with the equipment that we have, instead of leaving it outside, getting struck by the elements, mostly the sun is kicking the snot out of everything, dulls pain, kicks the crap out of your dashboards, we're buying his brand new equipment. The excavator and things of the like that, he has to squish into the garage, the excavator, I said, why, why, why haven't we ever in the past built like a lean-to in the back? Paved surface, now he's got a paper, paved surface, put a nice lean-to there, you can put all, store all the equipment underneath there, you don't have to worry about it getting crashed by the elements. If it snows out, all the big trucks and the plows underneath, you just drive, you can drive around the back, go in, come right out the front, so it was something I mentioned to him a few years back. We just never really got locked up in, in the concept and, and, you know, he's, he's talking about it now, and I'm grateful that he's talking about it now, and I, I think selectmen won't ask right on here, like, let's. Let's like get some ideas from, you know, what, what cost, what things look like and throw them out to us, and we, you know, maybe, maybe we look at that.
Yeah, you'd have, right, you'd have a roof, right?
Yeah, I actually got some, I just asked you, you haven't got a chance to look at. So I'm working, I'm working with a builder, and he's the one actually got the numbers for me now on doing that. And again, he, he told me there was like the seventy-four thousand for, this was the, all the beams, the roof and the trusses. And the texture one eleven siding on it, so he told me it was a price tag, seventy-four thousand dollars.
You know, he's talking about enclosed with the sidewalls. Well, the texture one eleven, the one thing that I cringe at is, I don't know if anybody's ever done anything with wood outdoors in the last decade, half, five to ten years with the sun the way it is. I know I put up brand new fences and the wood starts curling and everything else, it just, wood just doesn't last that long, so I, you know, I don't know where we're going. It was more of something like a giant lean-to where you come in and do everything, and now we're talking about a closed wall, so. Whatever we can do for whatever money we have available, and then we, I mentioned to Dan not too long ago, you know those big bubbles, the plastic bubbles that they put, like salt sheds? New Bedford's got them everywhere, and they last good fifteen, twenty years, those, that plastics heavy duty, maybe something like that, and I told him, I said, just get some ideas and let's talk about it, but we really need to do what Dan's talking about.
Chief procurement officer now to help you with that.
Get our, get our equipment. Into, I mean, you know, you're not trying to make a functional garage and working on, that's where he's got the garage's fault, but it's more like something to, to keep the equipment out of the elements, so the equipment lasts a lot longer.
Sorry, I'm looking, actually, it's gonna be storing equipment, correct.
So let's, let's take a look at that.
Again, I was trying to think of, for the future, Kevin, this is why I was thinking, you know, make this a building that, you know, you can do options on tin on the outside too, as far, and insulate it later on, and I'm just thinking something that. You know, even if you keep it at forty-five degrees, it's still nice to start a diesel.
I'll be honest with you, I, you know.
This is down the road.
Nice steel building, nice steel building where you got a garage door on one side and a garage door on the other side, so you're driving right in and out, but steel buildings today, I mean, I know an individual in town that was supposed to be doing a little bit bigger of a project. And he told me, I'm X-ing that project, because what building I thought I was buying for a hundred grand is three hundred thousand on a steel building now, I was like, wow, that's a huge increase. So, I mean, it's, just let's figure it out, get some ideas and cost, with different ideas and what, you know, little pitches and see what it looks like and see what we want to. Later on, like I said with Dan, I said, even if you did some big metal frame thing, and I know metal's expensive, but it lasts forever. And you add the nice lean-to down the road, you can always start to closing it up, right, so, I mean, we, we'll talk about it.
Okay, okay.
All right.
All set?
All right, very good.
Thanks, Dan.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Good work out there, you know, dealing with what you have to deal with, with the small crew, we're down, I mean, I know you're not saying that, but we are down a couple of our own members in the DPW, and. When we get snow, you guys are out there doing your shit stuff, I'm sorry, so, good job.
We're on tape delay?
We're gonna beat that.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
Chips.
Chips.
Yeah, very good, town administrator report, well, Mr. Kelly, you went over.
Well. I, you've got the document.
Mm-hmm, you've got the documents, exactly.
To be accomplished in the thirty day plan, this was published days ago. The only place, job site I haven't visited yet is the fire station and the DPW, I'm visiting the DPW tomorrow. All the financial stuff is ongoing. The, we talked about the insurance review, I met with Maya today. It looks like six percent might be the maximum, we're gonna go up. We'll make sure, the only thing we're concerned about is workers' comp. Snow and ice budget, Dan and I have talked, we're both in agreement that as long as we don't have another blizzard like we had. That's gonna be about forty K in deficit. We talked about some of the other deficiencies in building the budget, you've got the latest budget buster thing, we're moving closer. And we're working it off, the town meeting articles we talked about. There is a prior year bill concerning Chief Gallagher's retro that Julie left a note on. That we're gonna be taking care of. As far as the administrative issues in the town administrator's office, all phones, if possible, are answered by a person. They're all interconnected now, the computers, the calendar, my calendar's interconnected. We are, with Nick's help, we are putting together a calendar for all the department heads, so we'll know when every department heads out. They'll fill it in, they'll have access to it, their vacation time, their seminars, their personal time, et cetera, so if. And the board will have access to it, so I don't want you folks. So I don't want you folks calling and looking for a department head and not knowing that they're on vacation for a week. I mean, that's just basic administration that was lacking. So we're trying to tighten all that stuff up. The email addresses, we got rid of all the old ones. Nick did a fabulous job. He's going to be saving short money, but it's about fifteen hundred a year.
Excellent.
You see the departmental, department manager's agenda and the minutes are attached. We'll continue to do that so you know what's going on in the department head meetings and infrastructure projects we've talked about and that's flying through it, but that's the end. And I believe Lisa gave you a copy of my calendar from when I started. And you'll be continuing to get that.
Excellent. Great work, Mr. Kelly. I appreciate the update and I think that's a thirty-day, but you've only been a few. A teen or so, so good work in a short period of time. I, I hope that you continue that work moving forward.
And I, I would like to thank, I would like to thank the board and all of the assistance, because when you come into a new job, you really need to know the lay of the land and you folks have been very generous in giving your time to the new guy to help me do a decent job. Because we're all here to serve the public and the citizens of the town deserve that.
Got it.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I guess as a follow-up to the town administrator's report with all of this work that's being done, we were notified that our assistant will be stepping down if we've March first.
Laura? That is correct.
And so I'm thrilled with some of these small things that have been, these small things add up to a lot, right? And I just think with Mr. Kelly's expertise in HR and building up departments, I would really appreciate the opportunity for Mr. Kelly to review all of our operations in town hall, staffing levels, the level of, you know, the, the level of requests that come in. Because I know while you were away and with the onboarding with Mr. Kelly, Lisa was up to her eyeballs in a lot of stuff, there were requests that would come in. She's trying to get meeting prep going, taking off that project, going off to another one. So I really would like to see, to get Mr. Kelly's take and come back to us with some type of, you know, unvarnished suggestion as what we can do. I mean, I, I just think the central office, it's the heartbeat of town hall, you know? And I think we've got to make an investment in this office and I just want to make sure that we're doing it right. And I think Mr. Kelly can, has already demonstrated his attention to detail and to come back with some recommendations. Or maybe things are working fine, I don't know, but I just feel like things are a little bit off-kilter, not because of a talent issue. I just think because of the sheer.
Volume.
Volume of, of things that are taking place, especially now where people, I think our, we've got ten thousand, three hundred and some odd shareholders in this town. They're customers, they're consumers and, you know, getting to it tomorrow or next week isn't good enough. We've got to be operating in real time and serving our residents, so I hope the board is supportive of that. And I know, I know you are, but to have Mr. Kelly come back to us with some kind of recommendation.
Are we posting this position?
We've discussed it and the ad and the concept of the position might not be what you need in an office.
Alright.
And there might be, I'm mulling it around a little bit, there might be something that you need there because the concept of that position with being a grant in, wasn't a grant manager, a grant.
Writer.
Clerical.
Administrationally, yeah.
As well as the other duties. Personally, I would much rather mentor and see the investigation for the availability of grants be in the planning office. I think that's where it belongs. And then you could see how, because as you said, this office is the control tower of town government and it's also the control tower of your licensing function. And so there are a number of things you can't afford to fall between the cracks. And that's why I'm not sure that that position should have anything to do with grant administration or grant writing.
Take a look at it, make a recommendation to the board.
I, I think so.
And you said, you just hit it, Lisa's our, yeah, traffic controller. I mean, that's where she's come down.
Oh, the plane's crashing.
That's what she's evolved to. It's not the position when she first started. And in her knowledge and institutional knowledge is invaluable to this town. She puts out fires on a day to day and I just think we got to figure this out.
I just also, yes, I'd like to commend Lisa. She's been doing a fabulous job. She's very welcoming to me and she's a great resource. I also would like to commend to the board the principal assessor because there is a great deal of institutional knowledge there and with the rest of the finance team being so new, I've been including her in things that are a little bit out of her wheelhouse, but because of her knowledge and she's been very helpful. And I would say between Lisa and Kelly, they've made my life easier in trying to help do my job.
Excellent. Very good.
Glad to hear the team's working together.
Very good. Selectmen analysis. Dave, you already?
Mr. Chairman, I got one more.
Okay, very good.
Personal privilege.
Yep.
Somewhat of a controversial issue this week, but I really would like to commend publicly the school administration and the school committee that made a vote on school masks, on masks for the students. You know, this, the teachers and the administration and the principals really had to work to overcome a lot during this COVID environment and the families and the kids really didn't complain and they hung in there and then the school committee ultimately acted. And also John Haukroft, who although was a dissenting vote, John is, you know, one thing I've always admired about John is he's a man of his conviction. He's got the kids' interest at heart. He's a great public servant, he's done amazing work for this town over the years and, you know, I just wanted to, sometimes one can be a lonely number. And I do appreciate John's public service to the town, just a fantastic contribution, contributor to the overall makeup of this town and also to the school committee for their efforts as well. So not an easy issue to deal with and, but I do want to at least recognize everybody's effort there in the school department.
Very good. Great, very good. The following boards, commissions have vacancies. Please consider serving your community by submitting a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. The Agricultural Commission has two alternate vacancies. The Beautification Committee has six vacancies. Community Preservation Committee has one vacancy, one Housing Authority vacancy, Cultural Council thirteen vacancies, Open Space Committee one vacancy, Historical Commission four vacancies.
Cultural, how many people are on Cultural Council? How many people are on?
You could have up to, I think, twelve?
Yeah, it was either.
So why do we still have thirteen if we?
Two to nine or twelve, but we only have.
How do we have so many?
That's the, that's.
He's got thirteen openings.
Oh, yeah, thirteen, so I'm.
Ain't nobody on Cultural Council but you?
No, you can have, I'm sorry, you can have twenty-one. That's, I'm sorry.
Can we lower the threshold so we can stop seeing thirteen opens? It sounds terrible.
So, you know, I was going to ask this question.
You can have twenty-one, we have seven.
I know, but that's, I mean, nine's good, it's an odd number.
I was going to ask this.
That's from the state, that's not from the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to jump in here, but I was going to ask this question. We were talking about the senior work-off program. Would that, could that apply to boards and commissions?
Okay, not, okay.
Alright, very good.
You might consider looking at the committees, if you can't fill the number, as far as if they're not mandated by the state, then you can or reduce the number on the committee.
Alright. Very good.
Motion.
Well, no, we got future business because Selectmen's meeting, March first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two at four PM.
Alright.
You don't have three of merch.
Oh, whoa.
Excellent.
Oh, be careful. I think I'm going away at the end of my, so.
Well, as long as you hear the first.
Huh?
As long as you hear the first.
I will be.
Just because I have to get letters out tomorrow morning.
The articles and all that stuff, but I think we're planning something for the end of the, end of the month. Just because March is too long, alright? We good?
Very good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.